Good evening, I'd like to call the December 18th Planning Commission meeting to order. Commissioner Austin, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to address the commission should fill out the request to address form, which is located on the side over here, and present it to the clerk. You could just do that now. First off, we'll have presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission. Have anything? Correspondence and staff communications from the Planning Commission Secretary.
Yes, thank you Chair Perez. Should have one item of correspondence in front of you tonight, memo from Kathy Allen regarding item number five. And then a couple of things to report on. First of all, I would like to introduce Justin Hardy, who's sitting here in the audience. He's our new senior planner, who you will be seeing here frequently. Move your hand. He's a new senior planner, has been with us now for a couple of weeks. And I'd also like to reintroduce our city attorney Mona Ibrahimee, who's rejoining us tonight after being away for a little while, so we're very happy to have her back. Two items of substance from last night's city council meeting for the Planning Commission. They took up appeals on the promenade subdivision out in Southport Business Park, and also the Buckeye conditional use permit time extension matters that were before us at our last Planning Commission meeting last month. The council supported the Planning Commission on both items, with one footnote on the promenade project that the council, four to one, did vote to not have that project be gated. Otherwise, they sustained the Planning Commission's approval. And then on five to zero, they rejected the appeal that was filed on Buckeye related to the Planning Commission's denial of that time extension request. And the wanted to pass along that the council was particularly complimentary of the Planning Commission in terms of its handling of the Buckeye matter, which we all know was challenging at the time, but they were specifically complimentary of the Planning Commission on that. And then if time permitting this evening, when we get to informal communication, I would like to have a couple of year-end remarks for the Planning Commission. So this time that closes staff's communication.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. Next up, we have presentations. We have a resolution 14-PC honoring Sandra White for her service to the Community Development Department and the Planning Commission. I would like to look through my commissioners and request a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt resolution 14-4 PC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Everything has to be in front of the microphone. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of West Sacramento honoring Sandra White for her service to the Community Development Department and the Planning Commission. Whereas Sandra White was hired by the Community Development Department in September 1990 and retired from the department on December 13th, 2014. And whereas Sandra has been devoted to helping the City of West Sacramento plan for its growth and development during her time working for the city, and whereas during her tenure with the Community Development Department, Sandra worked on many high-profile projects which have enhanced the city, including the River subdivision, Newport Estates subdivision, the city's habitat conservation plan, the South Fork Framework Plan, revisions to the zoning ordinance, along with many other projects. And whereas Sandra has been, sorry, has served the community with insight and vision as a staff member of the Community Development Department and to the Planning Commission, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Planning Commission of the City of West Sacramento does hereby recognize Sandra White for her dedicated service as a senior planner and for her tireless effort to improve the City of West Sacramento. Passed and adopted this 18th day of December 2014.
Thank you.[321.12][321.12](Applause).
There's a lot to say, but I do want to say to the Planning Commission, it was here that I honed and learned how to make my public presentations. And it was always, I felt it was always a challenge because I always tried to second-guess the Planning Commission, which commissioner is going to ask which question. Sometimes I got it right and sometimes I didn't get it wrong. And Mr. Moore was always the one that could come up with that question you never thought you were gonna get asked. But I want to thank you. I think I worked with Charlie the longest, and I think Russ, you might have been the second longest Planning Commissioner that I worked with. But I want to thank you for the opportunity. I started with the County Riverside, worked for the County Riverside for 6.7 years, and worked for the City Sacramento, for West Sacramento, for 24 years, three months and eight days. So I have a total of 30, 30 years under my belt. And I feel blessed because I get an opportunity to do this on my terms, on my time. I'm healthy, and so I'm being retired, what, six days, whatever? And I'm loving it, I'm enjoying it. I will miss the relationships that I was able to make here in the city, mostly with the Community Development Staff. I, you know, let them know last week, and they gave me a wonderful going away. I had, I want to share this with you, there's a number of people that live in the city that I've been, that city will remain unnamed. But she came to me, and there was a subdivision that was proposed in her neighborhood, subdivision with the rezoned general plan amendment. And they did not have a problem with the subdivision, but there was a through block trail that went to nowhere. And so she came to me and she said, "What should we do?" And I said, "You know, you need to go to the Planning Commission, write a letter and explain why this..." I mean, it was obvious that the trail did not go anywhere, there was no connection on the other side of the subdivision. Well, anyway, the Planning Commission approved it with the condition that, you know, the city would have to negotiate, you know, getting the access to, for another trail on the other piece of property at improvement plan stage. And so it kind of like left it out there. And I said, "Okay." So it had to go to the city council because it was a general plan amendment rezoned. So she says to me, "What do we do now?" And I said, "You know, you need to show up to city council. Because if you don't show up, they're gonna think that the neighborhood is okay with this trail." And I said, "You need to tell them that you do not want to see the trail that went to nowhere." So anyway, come to find out, there is, they weren't, the city was not going to be able to get access to that property to have the trail. So anyway, the city council approved it without the trail. And she came back to me, she says, "Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you." But she thanked me because I encouraged her and her neighbors, "You need to show up at city council." And so her husband suggested, "You need to be on Planning Commission." And I thought about that, and I heard one voice saying, "Hmm, that's an intriguing thought." And then the voice of sanity says, "You know, you won't have to write the staff reports, but you will have to read them, and you will have to go to a night meeting." And I said, "You know, I don't know." But anyway, my husband says, "Once you're rested, you should think about that." So I'm open to that. But for right now, my time is my time, I'm not committing to anything, and I just want to enjoy. I brought my granddaughter with me, I want her to see, you know, where I spent some nights here, I want her to see this. We were watching the city council meeting last night because of the promenade project, so we looked at it together. But anyway, I want to thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for the very nice resolution.
Thank you Sandra.
Thank you.[555.25][555.25](Applause).
Next, we have consideration and approval of the minutes for the November 6th Commission meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Chair Perez, we, I believe we skipped the disclosure of ex-party communications.
Oh, I did, I'm sorry. Disclosure of expertise communications. Any of my commissioners have anything to report? Okay, thank you. Thank you Mona. Next up, we have consideration and approval of the minutes from the November 6th Commission meeting.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Madam Chair, I need to abstain.
One abstention? Great, okay. Next up, we have the zoning administrator, item number three, zoning administrator interpretation regarding pool setbacks.
What's before you tonight is a zoning administrator interpretation regarding how to apply the required five-foot setback from swimming pools to dwelling units when there is an attached patio cover on the dwelling unit. Swimming pools are required to be five feet from the dwelling unit, and staff have historically considered attached patio covers as part of the dwelling unit. But the matter before you tonight arose because a homeowner made the argument that an attached patio cover is not part of the dwelling unit. The definition of dwelling unit in the code makes no reference to attached patio covers or other non-habitable attached structures, and because of this, it's unclear if the five-foot setback should be from the attached patio cover or the main part of the house. The zoning administrator made the interpretation that attached patio covers are not part of the dwelling unit, and an affirmation of the zoning administrator interpretation would result in no setback requirement between swimming pools and attached patio covers. Staff and the ZA, or the zoning administrator are in favor of this because a setback between swimming pools and attached patio covers does not serve an identifiable purpose that is not currently covered by the engineering or building divisions. They'll be continuing to look at structural and safety requirements. So really, the matter before you is whether to have a five-foot setback from an attached patio cover or from the main portion of the house. I'd like to turn over to you.
Okay, thank you. I'll start on my right. Do we have any questions? My right, my right. Any questions?
No, no questions.
Anything? Okay. Do I have a recommended action, motion?
Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No.
Do we need to open?
Oh, I'm sorry, we do. I have one request to speak, I apologize. Lawrence Wilson?
Yes.
Good evening.
My name is Lawrence Wilson, and I've resided at 3781 Brideway Lakes Drive in West Sacramento since 2008. In addition to the attachment that's provided in the agenda item, I have some additional relevant comments. For the last several months, I have been planning the addition of an in-ground pool to my Brideway Lakes property. Having enjoyed a 30-year career as a professional engineer, I applied the same methodical engineering process to the design and development of the pool that I would for any other engineering project. Thus, with the help of a highly rated Sacramento pool designer and contractor, we embarked on the design of an in-ground pool. As part of the process, we contacted the West Sacramento Building Engineering and Planning Departments to gain the required design information. Throughout the design process, the question of the open patio never emerged. In fact, the open patio is not considered to be part of the dwelling unit as previously stated, and as defined by the American National Standards Institute. The same definition was contained in the minutes of the West Sacramento City Council meeting that was passed and adopted on December 11, 2013. As part of the backup for the ratification of the Planning Department's recommendation, I submit the following relevant points for the record. We contacted the cities of Davis and Elk Grove to inquire about their setback requirements to see how their requirements related to those of West Sacramento. For both Davis and Elk Grove, a code does not exist that specifies setback requirements from an in-ground pool to a dwelling unit. Davis did state that their only concern is to maintain a five-foot property line back to the in-ground pool. In both cases, city staff made statements that the design has to meet the building and engineering requirements, which parenthetically, we have done for West Sacramento. The Association of Pool and Spa Professionals, the APSP, is the only pool, spa, hot tub, and recreational water standards development organization accredited by the American National Standards Institute. The APSP advocates a scientific and technical basis for policies and regulations that maximizes consumer safety. According to the 2011 code, there is no restriction on the distances of an in-ground pool from a dwelling unit. In addition, the APSP was in full support of this specific site design case example. The common theme from these additional source investigations is that there is no issue as long as the engineering provides the objective evidence in meeting the site-specific structural and safety requirements. Therefore, I respectfully request that you ratify the staff's option-one recommendation. I am grateful for the opportunity to make my case to you, and I thank you for your consideration.
Okay, Mr. Wilson. I'll bring it back to the commissioners. Do we have?
Oh, you're right.
Do we have any questions for staff? No?
Then I will, I move we affirm the zoning administrator's interpretation that patio covers are not part of the dwelling unit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Great.
Any interested party may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission in this matter to city council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 15 days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four, public hearing regarding 841 Bright Avenue tentative subdivision map. I will be recusing myself and turning over a gavel to Commissioner Olson.
And Chair Perez, just to state on the record that you are recusing yourself because you have a conflict of interest under the Political Reform Act.
Thank you.
This project is a tentative subdivision map application for the creation of 20 lots ranging in size from 5,479 square feet to 14,004 square feet on a 3.69 acre parcel. The project would be an infill development and is located in the Bright neighborhood. The project would be accessed from a newly constructed cul-de-sac. The cul-de-sac would be a public street, and the project is not proposed to be a gated development. The site contains a total of 29 Valley oak trees of varying sizes. Staff, due to the number of oak trees on the site, staff did request an arborist report for the project to detail the health and size of the trees. That report states that four of the trees are in poor condition and should be removed. Two other trees are graded as either poor plus to fair. All of these six trees are shown on the site plan as proposed for being removed. There are an additional two trees on lots two and three, which are also slated for Would like to also note that there are two large heritage oak trees that are not on the property but are directly adjacent to the property. Next, a lot 10, at the end of the cul-de-sac, their drip lines do have significant overhang onto lot 10, and so staff has conditioned the project so that no structures be placed within the drip line of either tree. Staff is recommending approval of the project as we believe all findings can be made. The applicant is here to answer any questions the commission may have. This does conclude my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the commission? I'll start on the left.
I'll wait for after the hearing.
Okay. All right. At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come up and speak. Aye.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Javed Siddiqui, I'm with JTS Engineering in Sacramento. We have read the staff report, and we are in agreement with all the conditions. We ask your support and approval. I can answer any questions if there are.
While they're up there? Is it okay? Since you say that, I am going to request clarification or possible addition of one of the conditions. I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm going to ask for clarification or an addition to one of the conditions, and it's condition number five. It has to do with the large heritage oaks and the drip line. My question to staff would be whether or not construction would include a swimming pool? And if it doesn't, should we also include in the condition, the construction of a swimming pool shall also be prohibited within the drip line of the oak trees? And I can bring you back to the commission for discussion on that, but since the public hearing is open now and you're there, I'd rather have this discussion with you.
Yeah.
The, my question for the applicant is, would you be okay with the addition of excluding a swimming pool on that lot within the drip line of the heritage oak trees?
Yeah.
That's lot 10.
Yeah. The way I see the condition, that we would not be, we would be prohibited from putting any structure, and pool would be in structure, that would intrude into the drip line of the oak trees. So I kind of see that the staff has already covered it, and if you want to clarify that further, I think that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That was it for me.
Thank you. I have kind of a similar situation that I'm a little concerned about with the trees, and as construction goes in, and we have, you know, more support for the trees to grow, and there's nothing impeding it as far as any structures, anything else that could possibly impede it, and affect the growth of the trees, and maybe the safety of sidewalks, or any walking paths around the area. As the trees grow, roots grow, things like that. Just, I am not as familiar with the terrain and what currently is in there right now, but since I have you here and you've done the background and the research, if you can just answer that a little bit for me?
Well, the lot itself is pretty flat. And so as part of grading, we are required to design it to the city ordinances and effect. But any planting, landscaping, or construction is going to be within the setbacks as allowed. Trees, you're concerned about the trees and the roots of the trees?
Roots of the trees, as you have, you know, maybe the drip line and more support for the trees, they would likely increase in size, and so thrive a lot better than I think maybe what currently is going on.
I think, you know, there is an arborist report attached to the tentative map, but further, the arborist would evaluate, you know, if there's an intrusion on the drip line of the tree, or danger to the health of the tree. But I think they'll have to design the houses around the trees, is what we were thinking.
Okay. Okay. That's fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
No for the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I have one request to speak from Marcia Torrio.
Yeah, I really want to get some clarification.
Come on up to the microphone, so we can all hear you.
My name is Marcia Torrico, and this is all new to me, so I read through your description here of the project, but in a layman like myself, doesn't really understand a lot of what is said here. And I don't know if I heard mention anything about the oak tree by lot 19, what's going to happen to that?
That's a pretty big one there.
It's a very large oak tree. And it looks like it sets on part of the lot.
That's the one right on the boundary there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. See which one of us can find it first in the report.
Is it one of these numbers, Ross?
I believe that the applicant's engineer might be able to answer that question.
It seems to be four, four of them, 446, 447, 448, 449, in that area, and that lot 19, the numbers?
Mm-hmm.
I see four of them listed. Which one are you referring to?
446 would be removed, but I'm not sure if that's the large one.
I'm not sure.
It's very difficult to tell.
Ground radius, I think the large one's 440...
Can we ask the...
449, I don't have those dimensions.
So tree 447 is proposed for removal. It's right on the edge of the property. It is an undersized tree, and so it would not be considered a protected tree.
She's referring to the oak tree, the large oak tree there?
No.
No?
A small, a very small tree.
Okay.
There appear to be three oak trees in a clump right there, and the larger one is not proposed for removal.
Okay.
That was difficult to decipher, but eventually we can get there.
Another question I had was, I just wanted for information, say, since I do back up to the property, whether these residences are going to be single-story or two-story?
Can you give us the location of your residence?
Yeah, it's...
What that property might look like?
It's the third one in from where we were talking about, so my residence would be, lot 17 and 16 would butt up against my property.
I don't believe we're voting on the types of structures here tonight. Maybe David can clarify for me.
That's correct. What we have is the land division before you. At this time, we do not have any, you know, further development plans at this time.
Otherwise, the houses that would be allowed on these lots are houses that are generally zoned for this area, which could include single or two-story, one or two-story.
It is possible that there could be two-story homes here, absolutely.
Okay.
Would he know?
I don't know if, I'm not sure, it can change. Even if we vote on the subdivision tonight with an idea that they would all be single-story, two-story homes are permitted currently. So unless we took action to prohibit them, which I wouldn't be ready to do, one or two-story homes would be permitted in this area, based on the current zoning.
When would myself, as a resident... When would myself as a resident know whether there were going to be single-story or two-story? Because I have a concern as a resident, not having privacy in my own backyard if it's a two-story.
I'm not sure when.
What I would do is I would encourage you to, if the applicant is interested, to discuss it with the applicant. There's, you're bringing up an issue of single and two-story buildings, but there are design features that you can put, that the architect can put into place where you would have basically, what I would equate to faux windows. There would, it could be two stories, but there's not windows or embellishments that look like windows but aren't windows. So there's a couple of different design things. We're not, we're here not here to discuss that. Personally, I would not be inclined to make any sort of recommendations as a planning commission on something that may not yet be designed or is still in the design phase. So I would encourage you to discuss it with the applicant if they're open.
Is that this gentleman over here?
I think he's the applicant's representative. And it would come forward at a separate time. Again, I'm not sure what their timing it would be. But my understanding is that if you received a notification that you're within the proximity that you would be noticed when it came before for essentially, I guess, a design review. Is that correct? Planning could stuff that way?
There is no design review in this area.
Just kidding.
The other question I had was regarding utility lines. Utility lines. You have something here. Let me find it. You talk about utility lines being put underground, and any existing ones would have to be also put underground, is that correct?
David, can you?
We could, we could prefer to respond to all the questions at the close of the public hearing if that would be okay for the planning commission.
Okay. I'm sorry.
And time has actually expired, so was that actually your last question?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your questions. For coming tonight. Okay.
Did we, I apologize, did we close the public hearing? Or do we have?
Right now, we'll close the public hearing and go back to the commission for deliberation.
Wendy Williams of their engineering division would respond to the question regarding the utility undergrounding.
Good evening, commissioners. Yes, there is a proposed condition for the utility undergrounding just along the frontage of this particular parcel. That's a standard condition that we do add to the subdivisions. It is within your purview to waive that condition if you so choose. If you do not waive it, the applicant will be required to underground along his frontage all of those overhead lines that are currently existing. That won't necessarily reduce the number of utility poles because, as we may have explained before, in order to underground, you still need poles on either end to go back up and support the existing overhead lines that are outside of this property's frontage. Okay? So you may have the applicant remove one pole, but he's going to have to put another pole at the corner of the property in order to support the lines that are past his property. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So now I'd like to bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Start, am I right?
I, at this point in time, will support the staff recommendation. And I don't have any other additional questions.
Russ?
Sure. Question for staff. Again, getting back to, first, I'm going to pause, actually. Thank you for requesting the Arborist report. The trees were my primary concern for this piece of property. And given that there are so many of them and some large trees, I definitely want to make sure that we are protecting our oak trees, especially since we seem to be losing some naturally recently. Regarding condition number five, construction, it's a little vague, and I just want to make sure that we're not putting something within the drip line of the large heritage oaks, including a pool.
So we've, we heard what you had to say, and we tried to work up some additional language here on, on the fly. And we came up with, "Construction of structures and any impervious surfaces within the drip line of the oak trees on Lot 10 shall be prohibited."
I would take a swimming pool as being impervious.
Yes. Our intent here was to capture, you know, anything that would go under the, into the drip line that would impair, could potentially impair that tree, especially since it is on an adjacent property.
Okay. So I'm, I'm okay with the project with the modification to condition number five. That's all, those were all my comments.
Commissioner Austin?
I'm in support of staff recommendation with Commissioner Lee Diggs amendments. Amendment.
I would agree with that as well.
Okay, looking for a motion?
I'll move the recommended action with modifications to condition number five as read by Kathy Allen. I'll second that.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Any interested party may appeal the decision of the planning commission this matter to the city council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 10 days of tonight's action. And the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. We will, I will go get, we'll get Commissioner Perez back in here for our next item that Kathy will also present.
All right. Onto item number five. Public hearing regarding proposed amendments to planned development standards for West Sacramento Self-Storage located at 2274 Lake Washington Boulevard.
Okay, this item is a request for minor amendments to the PD 37 standards to allow partial removal of the berm, which is located along the eastern boundary of the West Sacramento Self-Storage project, which is located in a portion of Westbridge Plaza Phase Two. In April 2013, the planning commission approved a tentative map which created three parcels from one 12.71 acre parcel. This project is located on one of those parcels which was created. The applicant's mini storage facility is currently under construction and is nearly complete. During the construction of that project, the applicant removed a five-foot-tall portion of what was an existing earthen berm. The applicant was informed by the city that the berm was a provision of the PD 37 and that the applicant would either have to replace the berm in the condition in which it was originally found or apply for a minor modification to PD 37 to request that the berm remain in its current state with the five top feet of it removed. In September, the applicant did apply for the minor modification to PD 37. The applicant's reason for this is to help facilitate safety issues. When the berm was at its maximum height, the way the project was created, it would have created kind of a gully. There was a concern by the applicant that that depressed area would become an attractive nuisance and attractive for the potential for homeless encampments to form in that area. With the five-foot portion of it removed, there's a more clear line of sight available to be seen from Arlington Road, which runs behind the applicant's project. Planning staff did take the applicant's plans and discuss this project thoroughly with the police department. And the police department staff did conduct a crime convention through environmental design review of the project. And they do concur that the applicant, that the removal of the top portion of the berm will reduce the likelihood of the backside of the project from becoming an attractive nuisance. The rear wall of the applicant's project, the backside of the mini storage facility is 11 feet high. It's taller than the original berm was, so it actually creates additional coverage than what the berm did originally. And because of that, that it creates a greater buffer than was there before, staff believes it can support the continued removal of that portion of the berm. This concludes our presentation. If you'd like, we can answer questions now. The applicant is also here in the audience if you have any questions for him.
Thank you, Kathy. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay, I will go ahead and close. Does, would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tom Smith. I'm the owner of the West Sacramento Self-Storage and also the builder developer. When we started the project, we had some problems back there. I didn't realize the berm was going to be that much of a nuisance. We removed about 150 feet of it right next to Lowe's when we started the project, and they were told that we'd leave the rest of it. Since then, we've had a lot of problems with the homeless people. And the homeless people now have an encampment about, about 100 yards from our facility right today, and they're camped out. Actually, they're camped on city property right now. And so by us removing the berm, we've kind of opened the back up so it's, they can't go in there and say, set up camp. And we can kind of patrol it and keep track of it. We're going to landscape it, and we're going to put shrubs against the wall that will stop graffiti. We get graffiti about once a month back there. And we remove it, and so it's, we're trying to stop the graffiti from going into them. By opening it up, I've talked to the neighbors out there, and the neighbors all feel that was a good idea to open it up. And then just recently, we're in the process of closing off the opening with the wall, closing the property to Lowe's so the neighbors can't come over the wall or between the wall and go into Lowe's. And we're adding approximately 20 trees to that area up there. And I told the staff that I would go ahead and landscape the property down to the asphalt, to the street. That's city property. In our conditions, we don't have to, but I think it would look attractive to landscape. But Lowe's had to do it, but we didn't have to. But I, since I own the property and I'm building it, I just feel it's necessary that we landscape all the way down to the street and maintain it. And we have an open, the property, I don't think any of you have visited the site at all, but it's very open now where you can drive down and you can see it, and it won't hide anything in there. We've had, let's see, before we start, we had three fires that were started back there right before we started construction. So it's been kind of a nuisance, so that's why I wanted to remove the berm. So, and then by adding the additional landscaping, I have other facilities all throughout Sacramento, but the plants that I put along the wall, and within two years, the graffiti will be eliminated because the wall will be up high enough where they can't graffiti anymore. And we can see them now, the neighbors can see them, and we can see them. So we have people that live on site, managers. We're trying, it will be open, the site will be open in about two weeks, actually. And then we have, I think, 16 cameras on the property now, so we can see everything that's going on back there. So if there's any questions, I can answer them for you now.
I just have a comment.
Our landscaping won't be completed, probably for the weather we've had, it won't be completed back there probably for at least 30 to 45 days, you know, till we get the landscape completed.
Thank you. You have a comment?
I just have a couple of comments. First of all, thank you very much for taking the initiative to address this issue and seeing that it is a public safety issue and working together with law enforcement, fire department, whoever you all have to work with there, and doing the landscaping and, you know, just doing a great job and maintaining that.
I have, I have two facilities in Elk Grove, and I've had the same problems with homeless people and graffiti. And I, there's all sorts, if it gets to be a real problem, I put motion detectors back there, and when they go up the graffiti, the sprinklers come on, as an example. Or I can, or the lights will come on and things like this. We try to discourage that as much as we can.
And also on addressing the homeless issues, I believe that we have a homeless coordinator here in West Sacramento.
We've dealt with, we're dealing with the police right now in removing the encampment. But they seem to leave and they come back. They leave and come back, and so.
I think this, this recommendation here would, hopefully will help to address that.
Yeah, it will eventually, yeah. Thank you. Is there any other questions I can answer for anybody?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have any questions or comments for staff? Commissioner Galvin?
David, I just, addressing the letter, is this referencing an improved piece of the berm that was removed at the beginning of construction? Or is this referencing the additional piece that was recently removed? And if so, is there a noticeable noise difference?
We actually believe that the wall, much like when, when it went behind Lowe's, would actually improve that condition. The wall, you know, the wall is much taller than the berm ever, you know, ever was. The berm was much more of a visual barrier, if you will. So now, now you have a complete wall behind the entire development as, and as they say, the gap between the wall at Lowe's and then their facility, they're filling in as we speak. So we actually believe we actually have an improved situation from what we had before.
As I recall, when this project came up, was there not a noise study done that showed?
We had one during the original shopping center development, particularly with Lowe's because they did have a lot of loading in the back, so that's where the wall came from. In this particular project, you know, we expect the mini storage to have quite a bit different characteristics than, you know, the Lowe's would. And so the rear wall of the mini storage building serves as that wall.
Answers my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Austin? Commissioner Lee Diggs?
Thank you. You know, I have a, probably a different perspective on this. And in my opinion, it changes finding number one. So I couldn't actually come to the conclusion that finding number one was met. The berm is part of PD 37, and it was put there for a purpose, so any modifications to it wouldn't necessarily conform to the plan. The wall, I don't actually see as additional screening. I see it as we put in the berm to screen from the building and these very, very tall walls, which is one straight, long wall. If we were going to not screen that, I would have requested, perhaps we break up that wall a little bit, which could be an alternative. But I see the, the berm as being a buffer between the residential units and the commercial property. And Lowe's being a very large commercial property, I think, was the trigger for this. I wasn't here, I don't think, for the time. I wish Charlie was here tonight, but he's not with us. The comment of finding number one, that the berm will not add additional screening, I'm not sure how that could have been concluded because there, there's five feet that's been reduced, whereas the berm would add five feet, so would screen again the building from the, from the residences. As far as the homeless go, I can definitely appreciate the homeless problems. We're struggling with it throughout the city. I would have suggested maybe working with the city and changing the berm, say, the geometry of the berm to, say, add more slope, but I don't think I would have decreased the height. So in my opinion, I'll keep it brief, the finding number one can't be met because of reasons I mentioned, the purpose and the screening issues. So, thank you.
Commissioner Olson, do you have any questions or comments?
Just one comment. I actually did see a fire there. It was probably four, three or four weeks ago, back behind there. Is that? Yeah, it was, it was, it was, yeah, I think it was right before Thanksgiving. Yeah, it was, it was, yeah, I think it was right before Thanksgiving, actually. So anything that would improve that situation, I assume that that was set by homeless? I'm not, it was right behind your property.
I think when the landscaping is completed, you won't, the wall will go away. You won't even see the wall, really. The landscape, we've added 20 additional trees. The sized trees we're putting back there are 24-inch box trees. So when they go in there, they're going in there, it's starting anywhere from eight to 12 feet tall. Right out of the box, they'll be in there. So you're not going to really see the wall once it's landscaped. And then I've offered to landscape the city property all the way down to the asphalt, which will, that means, and I'll maintain that with the sprinkler system. So the wall really will go away. You won't see it. I don't like to put vines on the walls or anything like that, because then you get rats coming into your facility. And so what I do is I put shrubs in there, usually evergreens. They're not deciduous trees at all. They'll be evergreen trees. And like I said, the trees will be spaced enough where the wall will just basically go away. You won't see it. We have talked to all the neighbors there. The neighbors have no problem with it. They actually like it. But right now, it's a big wall. I mean, you see it, there's no landscaping there, so it really does look like a big wall. We've added pilasters. I don't know if you, how much the commissioners have gone out and looked at it. Right now, the pilasters are every, I think, 30 feet on center. And in the last three weeks, they've been veneered with a brick. So you've got two different split-face blocks with a decorative cap, plus a brick on every pilaster to break up the long, the length of the wall. So that kind of breaks it up also. The berm, really, my engineer, I have to admit, I guess he made a mistake when he did the plan. We know it's because if the berm was left in there, we would have almost had a vertical slope on the backside of it. And it would have had an erosion problem, plus of the homeless people and graffiti. We've had graffiti where they've gone in and graffitied inside our units. We just got our gates up yesterday, or day before yesterday. But we have graffiti right now that's actually, they've come onto our property and gone inside to our units and graffitied inside the units. So that's why we try to, you know, do what we can to eliminate anything, to any graffiti or people coming back there at all. But the wall will go away. I mean, once it's landscaped, you won't see it. I mean, right now, it's pretty noticeable out there. So I don't know if there's any question I can answer for anybody on the wall.
My other question was, of what extent? It was kind of based around the landscaping and some things.
Yeah, we've added trees to it. Right now, I think the shows in the report here, we're adding 52 trees, plus the shrubs will be back there. And then we'll put a ground cover. The ground cover will go all the way down to the asphalt of where the road is and come up. So we're landscaping probably 12 feet of the city property, and I'll maintain that. It just won't look, if I just had the landscape to my property line, and then from there on down to the street, it just, it wouldn't look very appealing or not. It'd have weeds, like, it'd have weeds, like, the weeds are there now. They're like 3, 4 feet tall. We're going to landscape that. So, but I've built, I have 16 stores throughout Sacramento, and I've done walls in all the different cities, Roseville, Rockland, City of Sacramento. And I know what it takes to kind of hide the walls, but at the same point, keep the security up. And graffiti's become a big issue just in the last four or five years. It seems like we've had a lot of problem with graffiti and keeping it off the walls. And with our walls, we can't, we can't paint that wall in the back. A lot of cities have graffiti removal programs and things where you can go in and paint the walls. We can't paint our walls back there because they're decorative. So we either have to go in and power wash them or sandblast them. We can't paint them back there at all. So, and if the city wants, you know, landscaping, you know, I think, to me, I'm spending about $8 million in building a facility. The landscaping has cost me about $150,000 to do the landscaping. And I don't know if any of you have gone by the facility at all in the last couple of weeks. It's kind of, we were told to make it look like McDonald's and Taco Bell. That was, they want to keep that theme going back there. And what we did, the owner of the property in front, we built the mini-storage along that wall, so if they ever had an industrial user come back there, like Lowe's has trucks going there 24 hours a day. Our facility is closed down at 7:00 at night, and our lights are only six feet off the ground. So the wall deflects all the light from going over to the neighbor's yard, and we have no, there's no vehicles in there after 7:00. We're shut down completely. So there's a lot of reasons to play into, the height of the wall and things like that. But I think if the weather lets us and the landscaping goes, I think you'll see 100% difference in it, you know, just with the landscaping. So, is there any other question you might have?
No, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Guerrero, do you have any questions?
Well, I, what, the issue that Commissioner Alibig raised was something I wanted to just get more feedback. As far as the history that you referenced around why we have PD 37 and whether or not the finding number one is, given that it's not met, any recommendations you would have to address that?
Plan Development 37 goes way, way, way back, likely into the, likely into the 80s, you know, when this site was part of the port property and was planned as part of the overall industrial development for Seaway. Site was never envisioned to be a retail center, you know, for many decades until, you know, the West Bridge, you know, came about, you know, earlier this decade. So we do have a lot of stuff sort of on the books that, you know, really wasn't necessarily set up with a retail center in mind. We based our recommendation on this primarily on the input from the police about how now with the presence of the wall, which is really the back of their buildings. And I think that the exhibits that are included in here, the line-of-sight drawings that were part of, part of your attachment one, let's see, excuse me, attachment two. I think if you, you see, if you flip to those pages and you sort of compare the section, I'm looking at their exhibit SD 1.0 and then SD 1.1. These, you know, exhibits would definitely, you know, if the berm were left in its current, its old height, you definitely create a tunnel and a sort of a hiding place in there between the back of the building and where the berm, you know, used to be. And the way they've graded it out, they sort of leveled it out to allow these views. And so when we asked the police for their input on this, they actually were supportive of what the applicant had done, because from a crime prevention through environmental design standpoint, they felt this was a preferable situation. I also want to make clear, you know, the entire berm is not gone. They have leveled off a portion of it. And, and so I want, I was, originally, we were contemplating not supporting this project based on what had been out there historically. But once we received the recommendation from the police review on this, we did see that this would be potentially a more favorable condition from a crime prevention standpoint. And thus, it's largely the basis for our recommendation to you this evening.
So would it be a requirement to have finding number one in order for us to approve it tonight? Or would we?
Well, we are, we are suggesting, we are suggesting that this partial removal of the berm, you know, which is a very long, it goes along the entire backside of this property, all the way down to, close to where Jefferson and Southport Parkway, you know, come in together, that it's only been partially removed in this area. That in our estimation, it is indeed a minor modification. And that those, we still remain having a berm back there. We still remain achieving some of the visual goals and noise barriers. But also, just looking at it now in 2014 standards, we would not want to unintentionally create an area that may be problematic from a crime standpoint. Clearly, there's already been some issues out there. This is a big issue in our community. We just went through a crime, three-day crime prevention through environmental design training session with our police, you know, a couple of months ago. And this was one of the projects that we actually looked at during that. And it was definitely found to be more favorable, the way this has been graded, so that there aren't hiding places created. So we are, we remain supportive of being able to make, you know, finding number one, with all due respect to Commissioner Alibig.
Commissioner Guerrero, and the way that I read it, it's an interpretation of substantial conformity. So I think that Commissioner Alibig is of the opinion that it doesn't substantially conform, and we could, you know, another commissioner could determine that in their definite, in their judgment and their estimation, that the proposal does substantially conform to. So that's, I think that's a way to approach it.
Sounds good.
I have a couple of comments. I do realize that there's a clear divide on this one. Given that the berm was graded down without going through the city first, that part actually bothers me a little bit, because this is not part of the approved project. Why aren't we actually conditioning the project to include additional screening? The wall of the build, I'm sorry, the wall of the building is not a screen. That is what you are screening. So why aren't we conditioning the project to mitigate that? In other words, you are adding trees, and I definitely appreciate your effort on this. Making it a requirement means that you would need to maintain that as well. And I would, I understand you can't condition potentially something on city property, but something a little bit more vague to ensure that, in fact, that building does maintain adequate screening from the nearby residences would be appreciated.
Well, the landscaping is actually part of the building plans, which have already been submitted and approved for the project. So they do already have a landscaping plan in place. They just haven't put any of their landscaping in yet because of the weather, and also, they were waiting for the final resolution of this item. But there is, all the landscaping he's discussed is in their plan.
And regards to the portion that may be on city property, you know, that needs to be evaluated further about for the, you know, feasibility of that and the right-of-entry, many easements, maintenance agreements, you know, things like that. So that portion remains for discussion. But the principal part of the landscaping, and it's also shown in some of their exhibits, is indeed on their property and is part, was part of the building plans. As many other projects right now, the weather is definitely making it more complicated to put in that landscaping, so we might be looking at a TCO on this project.
So I will say that I have no issue. I think it's a reasonable interpretation. And the buffer still exists. It just exists five feet lower in one place. I haven't heard that there's been any issue with the residents behind there. In fact, I'll take the applicant and his word that, in fact, they're in support of it, and that there are before us, or there's discussion before us regarding law enforcement problems, and law enforcement is in support of this.
Yeah, we have, and we have mailed to the Jason property owners in Arlington Oaks now twice on this item, since this was originally scheduled at one of your previous meetings. And so the only communications we received was the one letter that's attached to the memo tonight.
While I share Russ's concern with removing the berm prior to asking or approaching the city about it, I have no issue with the proposal as a stance.
Can I get a little clarity? It appears that on page three, I'm looking at conditions of approval. My question is, if we're considering these conditions of approval, it seems to me that perhaps we could accommodate Commissioner Alibig's request to include a condition specifying something about the landscaping. So can I get some clarity?
My intent with that, by the way, is to mitigate the loss of five feet by 150 feet. Because, again, the wall doesn't replace the berm, so that is, that's my overall drive
We do have the condition number five in there. It does regard the landscaping in keeping with our crime prevention through environmental design objectives. And so this is, you know, sort of supplementary to the landscaping that's already part of their project that's now, you know, obviously under construction at this point. I'm concerned about putting any conditions on there, about compelling the applicant to put anything on city property at this time. It's also the location of the Northwest, Lower Northwest Interceptor in Arlington Road. And they did contact us to verify that this project would be exclusive of their easement in this area, so that is another complicating factor in this area. But we, you know, we believe that the onsite landscaping has been addressed, you know, through the building plans that are already been approved.
If there are no more questions, can I get a motion?
You guys wait longer, I'll move.
I moved staff recommendation.
I second it.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose?
Nay.
We have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Guerrero?
Aye.
Commissioner Alibig?
No.
Commissioner Galvan?
Aye.
Commissioner Austin?
Aye.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe we reached the informal discussion portion of our items. So briefly, this office is our last meeting for the year. I would like to thank the commission for your service this year. We have had many, many meetings, many frank discussions on many projects this year, and I believe that we have all done well for our community this year. We will cancel both of our January meetings, as the first meeting would fall January 1st, and then the next meeting would be on January 15th, which is the Chambers Annual Big Dinner downstairs that night, so we'll cancel that. So if any commissioners wish to attend that event, we do that. When we meet again in February, we will do the new chair, vice chair and secretary, you know, at that time. And so on behalf of the planning staff and City Attorney's Office, thank you for your service this year, and we will look forward to seeing you in 2015. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Adjourn.